The same kids quarterback, ain't it? What, fuck? That's right. The Woodboys graduated. Now, you can look as good as you want to on seven seven. Remember we did seven seven versus Barnes High School? As he spelt it. Yeah, we did pretty good. I mean, they were beast by like a touchdown. Because like, you know, if we got in the game with them, they got three deep at each position. They can, you know, they are first string.
Did you get under that night?
Yeah.
We got there wearing a life jacket. I had a little interview about that. Had to take a spare tire. A spare tire.
I remember all of your boys, man. Do you remember him?
Hey.
Can you remember them boys in the school? What was your name?
I heard it's your race.
They had a bunch of brothers and sisters.
One of them was.
We don't, yeah. One of them had blonde hair.
Yeah.
Awesome. This is where these boys.
Ah, well, clearly. But then.
Matthew.
Matthew.
Yeah, one of them was Matthew. Matthew. Well, we think it's time to go, man.
All right, yeah. Okay, it's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. As customary, we always have a word of prayer before we begin the meeting. And I'll lead us in this prayer at this time. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for the blessings of life that you've given to us. And we just thank you for being able to live here in a free country that we live in, known as the United States of America. We thank you for those that have sacrificed and given their own blood for this country and our freedoms here. We just thank you for being able to live in the state of Georgia and here in Hart County. We want to thank you for our emergency services, our EMS, our volunteer fire department, our law enforcement. We just thank you for the caliber of guys and girls that work here in our county to make us a safe community. Lord, we just come to you tonight asking for your guidance and your blessings upon this meeting. I believe each man up here that serves in this capacity has a passion to do the best of what's for Hart County. And I pray that that's what will become of our meetings. In that I would pray, amen. Let's all stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call to order our Tuesday, June 27th, 2023 meeting. I'd like to welcome each one here tonight in person and those that may be watching on HTC Channel 3 and also our video YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I know we got some amendments that we need.
We got two additions. Under old business, 12D had the moratorium extension. And under new business, under AO, add the county's request, DNX, the fire department from the city of Barsh, or town of Barsh.
Okay, with those amendments, can we get a motion to approve?
Sure, maybe.
Can we get a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett? Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on favor. It's five oh vote. We'll move on down to the minutes of the previous meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I actually attended. It wasn't Zoom, but it was that same app that Jeff was using. I just had the camera turned off. Go to meeting.
Go to meeting.
Go to meeting. Step telephones.
Step telephone.
Okay, anything else? With those corrections, can we get a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh vote. Now, we'll go to remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities done tonight, reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Kim, do you have anything?
I'm sorry. A little check dribble in this week on another opioid settlement. It's $813. And I brought that to Luana. Doug in our office, when we get the opportunities to apply, makes those applications. So I don't know why $813, but you have it. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, county administration report?
Just one thing, just to let folks know, we had a drowning surprise. It was a week ago at Paines Creek. It wasn't a camper. It was somebody put their boat in and was tubing there in the code. Just like to thank everybody who come help us. Of course, our sheriff's office, fire department, EMS folks, our local folks. We also had Anderson County Sheriff's Office EMA there, Elber County EMA, and I heard, of course, DNR, our local folks, and the state folks had a gang for the pontoon and so on. Just to publicly thank all the folks coming and helping us out. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. As far as chairman's report, I would, I know we say something about this every year, but I would encourage each of you to sign up for Code Red. Matter of fact, I was at Paines Creek Sunday, and I got an alert from Code Red thunderstorm, severe thunderstorm in your area. And it was the truth. It was there.
It was.
So it is a very good app. You can make, you can download an app on your phone, but you can go to hartcountyga.gov, and there's a link there if you want to download. And you can visit Hart County 911 EMA Facebook page and look for Code Red link. Like I said, you could download the Code Red app and also call E911. But don't call the 911 number, okay? Because we need you to call 376-3930. And I'll leave this up here if anybody wants copies of this. And they will, they will help you through the guidance of downloading the app in those situations. I know Lisa's also got experience in helping people with Code Red. But it's very important. It may keep you out of danger. And that's what we're about here. We want to keep a safe community. So that's part of it. We'll move on to District 1, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't have anything this time as far as in my district, but I would like to thank all of those that were responsible, the all parties responsible for our pre-fourth. It was really great. I went up and visited for a while. Very successful. And for all of those responsible parties for our fireworks show down there, I heard it was, and I didn't, I didn't attend that. But anyway, I'd like to thank all those people. There's a lot of work that goes into that from start to finish, so just thank you for them.
Okay, District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
I want to echo what Commissioner Bennett said. Appreciate our Oral Service League, you know, the pre-fourth and the fireworks. Enjoyed them. There was a lot of boats out there, and you know, they had island lights, looked real pretty out there as well. Also, want to thank all our law enforcement, our city, county, State Patrol, GSP, Brandon Pierce and Tim Vickery. I know they are our local DNR guys. I appreciate them guys. And I know they out there on that lake, you know, trying to keep us all safe and appreciate what they do. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you. District 4, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, the only thing I have tonight is I received an email, June 19th, from GDOT. And I'm guessing I received it, just me, because it's in my district. Maybe you guys received it as well. But since it is my district, I want to kind of make it public knowledge that GDOT is sending out this notification due to a proposed project in the Cannon area, which affects around Orchard, I think it's Orchard Road, State Roads, State Route 17, State Road 51, Stars Bridge Road. So if you live around that area, so on the Hart County side, if you would, of Cannon, you know, around that 1751 area, what they're looking for is maybe historical sites or historical landmarks that they're not made aware of. Because essentially, what it seems, and I haven't seen the detailed plan, but what it seems what they're looking to do is a bypass, said like a two-lane bypass, and you may know some of this too. So four-lane, four-lane bypass around Cannon. So you got 30 days to notify, so I just want everybody to know that. If you know anybody who lives in the area, I'm going to leave this copy here. I'm sure, you know, Terrell's probably got a copy as well. So you can call the board office for more information as far as getting in touch with these folks with GDOT. But essentially, the only thing you need to notify them is if your land is, I guess, a historical landmark. Because this is being, being compliant with what they're referencing, Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And obviously, we want to fringe on any landmarks or historical areas when putting in this bypass. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
Just a couple of things. Just a spirit head, we were notified yesterday. GDOT's back in the bridge business again. After all the headaches we've been through out in the goldmine area, now Cokesbury Highway, 77 Spur will be affected with Little Cedar Creek and, can't remember the name of it, Coldwater Creek, Little Coldwater Creek and Cedar Creek. So both ends will be impacted there. The other thing is, tax notices went out last week, and I know some of us have received some calls. There's a flaw in the state law with this estimated tax bill. The value is something if you disagree with, you need to go ahead and appeal. But the estimated tax bill is calculated using last year's mileage rate, not this year's mileage rate. So just remember, it says estimated, and that doesn't mean that it's going to be close. I don't know what it's going to be. We haven't done our budget, nor do we know what the rollback is. But generally speaking, this board's always taking the rollback and make the revenue neutral. So just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that, because that does get people, get blood pressures up and that kind of thing, especially when they don't understand the process. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, under old business 12A, deannexation request by Joshua Barnett.
Because this was on the previous meetings, and under that, at that time, it was going to leave an island. But when we get down to new business, those island situations are going to be taken care of by other deannexation applications of property owners that was creating the island. So I'm not sure, Kim, how we need to handle this.
I have all of that grouped together in one resolution for you all, so if y'all can hold off on any movement on those until we get to the bottom, I'll have them all in one resolution.
And we just vote on a resolution? And that'll include everything?
Almost everything.
Okay.
There's one that we've got to take out, and of course, we're adding the county because we were making problems for everybody else being an island, so.
We've got to get.
Um, I'll have to look back at it.
No, I got you a signature if you need it. You need, you need to do our signature.
No, no, you got another island. Mr. Roberts. Unfortunately, because all the rest of the C70s are backed into a C60, but it's an island, but it's.
Kind of an island, but it's a kind of an island.
Does it?
Yes. That's the first, that's the first part of the city of. Okay, great. Again, if we get down to B, it's the same situation, Mr. Cook. His two requests for his and his mother's property, we're going to leave an island that we'll get to after a while on those two. So again, as Kim said, we can cover them all in one resolution we'll get through. So I've got the pictures, if you want me to pull them back up and show them to you. I'd be glad to. But other than that, we can go back over them in a little bit.
All right, so we'll just go on down to property tax refund request for Bobby Martin, tax years 2016, 17, 18, and 19.
And basically, this situation is we all made a refund for Mr. Martin back a while back for the previous three years. And by law, three years as far as we can. Now, there's a clause in the law that Kim can explain a lot better than I can, that gives him the opportunity to do something else if we formally reject it. And that's what this is for, is we can't pay it, but you can vote to reject it formally. Is that kind of sort of run of it, Kim?
Does he have like some appeal process or something?
He has a court avenue available to him within five years of the date of the last tax paid. But the refund is only available three years from the date of the payment of the tax. So, you know, we authorize a refund for three years, and that's generally what we do. And this was the tax department's era. It was a necessary era. And it, I think, pretty much doubled that bill. But if you're looking at three years from the date the tax paid, the last paid was 12, 16, 20, 19, that actually expired in 2022, and they didn't make this application till 2023. So we've already been overly gracious. You know, I hate it that it's an error, but the burden is put on the property owner to get, to realize that they've been overbuilding to get back with the county, and that didn't happen in this instance.
And anybody in the past that's had this, had an issue similar to this, that's been eligible for a refund, they've got three years, if we could give them the three.
That's correct, yeah.
So we never gave them more.
And. And our tax commissioner did refund on January 14, '23, in the amount of 1,200.
Did refund, and it's just, it was a four-year request, and it's actually not us that's limited to the three years. It's the requister. They can only request three years by law. And so therefore, you know, we could grant or deny. But they requested four. So there was about 400 and maybe $29 left hanging out there for that year 2016. But by the time that application was had in 2023, that was way past date.
So he's outside of the guidelines?
He is, in two different ways.
Yeah.
And I think it's a she. I think it's B O B V I E.
All right.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Can we get a motion to deny?
I'll make a motion. We deny it.
I'll give you a second.
Commissioner Dorsey made a motion to deny it, and Commissioner Bennett, second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on in favor. It's five oh vote. Okay, now we'll move on down to the moratorium extension. We, the moratorium runs out at the end of this month. We are, have not finished our subdivision ordinance, so we're going to have to have an extension. And so.
I'll make a motion to extend the moratorium for 180 days.
My second. Okay. Then a motion by Commissioner Bennett and second by Commissioner Dorsey. And in the meantime, we're going to continue to work on the subdivision ordinance when we get that finished.
That's right. I mean, if we finish.
Just so people know what we're.
And if we finish it earlier, we can, we can lift a motion.
Yeah.
Right. So just so everybody understands that.
And that'd keep us from, you know, we could do it shorter, but if we do it shorter, then we're having to do this again. So let's just stick with what we're doing. We're working on it and extending 108 days. We can deal with that.
We're about to start working on the budget as well, so.
Okay, Commissioner Bennett made a motion for 180 days extension. And Commissioner Dorsey, second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, now we'll move on to new business, Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter Budget Increase You've seen the information there in your packet.
And I have representatives from Animal Shelter here, if someone come up and can explain here. I furnished them copies of everything you'd sent me, so.
Okay, the question came up because in previous, your previous fiscal year, the amount was 21120 per quarter. And the current fiscal year, October to September, it actually went down to 20,460 per quarter. In the first quarter, you paid that amount, but then the second quarter, January, you paid 16.5. And so that's a difference of 3960. And then we haven't received anything yet from April quarter. And we were just. Right, I figured that might be the case, but it's time for the July one to go out now, so we were waiting to send that too, for the same reason. But we wanted to appear before you and see if you had any questions. The letter explained how we calculate the shares for each jurisdiction. We work with nine different jurisdictions with three different fiscal years. It's kind of confusing. But it's basically based on percent share of usage. We, and we have a four-year rolling average. We don't use just the previous year. We do a four-year average. So if you have a puppy mill and 60 puppies, you know, brought in, then it's not going to boost your amount way up for that one year coming up. So the, I guess, since you've read that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them and see if we can get this sorted out. Because all the other jurisdictions are paying the amount that we're invoicing based on the same system.
So when we paid the 20,460, then it dropped down to 16,500. Does that mean that there were less animals that were.
No.
Basically, what happened, you know, based on the budget numbers I got from last year, it's based on four-year average, correct?
Correct.
Past four-year average. Those numbers drop.
Okay.
That's, that's.
That's what it's based on.
That's what it's based on. Now, their expenses probably went back up.
Right.
Didn't, but that's what the budget numbers that you're working on now come from.
And I think the confusion came in is some felt like we were charging per animal, and that's not the case. It takes a certain base amount for the shelter to stay in operation. Some things are just fixed costs, utilities, insurance, payroll, all that's pretty much fixed, regardless of whether we're full or half-full. A lot of our dog food's even donated, so that doesn't make a big difference. But, and what we, what we use for our budget figure is just the actual operational cost. No, anything as far as capital expenses, major equipment, all of our rescue efforts and so forth, all that's done through fundraising and private donations. That is not put into our budget that we use to base the invoices to the jurisdictions on. That's strictly the daily operational costs, maybe a little bit of maintenance, just routine stuff in there, but nothing major. We write grants and get donations and so forth to raise money for those other things. So what we ask, and of course, our costs are going up just like everyone's, everyone else's, but what we ask is that based on the percent of animals that we get from your jurisdiction, that you cover that share of our budget. And you saw in the, in the letter there, a comparison with some of the other shelters in our area. Stevens County, which is a one-county shelter, takes in fewer animals than we do and has doubled the budget, just about. And same thing with Haversham, one county, then they had to build the facility, and they have to manage it and keep up with all the employees and everything, whereas we do that. Madison Overthorpe is a private nonprofit like we are, and then they contract with the two counties. So theirs is a little different, but their budget is also $800,000 a year. So they do have a small spay neuter clinic in their shelter, which we do not have. We work with the veterinarians in the area instead to do that. But what we offer is really a bargain, and that's, that's what we want to do. We want to serve the jurisdiction, serve the citizens, and do it for the least cost possible and still do a good job. We get good reports from the Department of Agriculture, and as most of you probably know, right now, we are quarantined. Unfortunately, parvo did break out, and this is a time of year for that. There's just not much way around that. They come in looking healthy, and a week, 10 days later, break with it. And by law, the Department of Ag, we have to quarantine for two weeks. And if another one breaks, it's another two weeks from that point. And just so everyone is clear, we do not like to be closed. It's harder on us to be closed with a quarantine than it is to be open. We would much rather be open and bringing in animals, adopting animals out, serving the public. But that's the, those are the rules, and they're good rules. They're there for a good medical reason. We don't want to spread parvo all over the counties. So, you know, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them. I know it's a little confusing, but we feel like it is a good service for a very reasonable amount. We do the best we can.
Why, it's my understanding, Dutch Stone, that in the past, the chef's department had an issue with an animal, just say it's over the weekend or on Monday, that they were to call the shelter manager and y'all would take care of that situation.
We have tried to do that in the past, yes, and she's still, Tammy will go out all hours sometimes. We try and minimize that because she does need to have her rest, and she gets called sometimes at 2:00 in the morning.
I understand, but it's not all the time. I understand, but it's not all the time, but I mean, Terrell, you know, we've had some issues here.
I thought so.
With this.
It is an issue, but we've kind of tried to count it and trying to make it some holding facilities for ourselves.
Right.
It, well, it was a problem with the city, and that's not big enough. So with new jail, with the shelter, that's a challenge. Again, it happens, though, it's not for, it's not for long-term kids.
Right.
It's just to hold them until we can get them in.
Right.
So, again, that.
I just want to make sure that we're still on the same page for that situation.
Oh, yeah. The animal control officers.
Because it's very limited space for what we have.
Yes, the animal control officers know how to get ahold of Tammy, and for better or worse, sometimes, but they can reach her after hours, and she goes up when we're closed and, you know, so forth, and helps them out. I know one time Franklin County officer had stopped a truck on, or a car on the side of the interstate and had to take the guy to jail. There's a dog in the car, the deputy couldn't get the dog out, and so they just loaded the whole car, dog and everything, up on the rollback, took it to the shelter, and Tammy met him up there and crawled up and got the dog out. So, I mean, she does go above and beyond, and we try to serve the best we can.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your.
Thank you very much.
And we'll be working on the budget in a few.
I mean, you want to take any action in this current year? Is the question tonight?
Do what?
Do you all want to take any action to adjust it in the current year we're in? Is what they're asking for tonight?
Yeah, the $20,000. $20,000 from '16.
Right, I mean, I'm holding a payment for them, I just want to know how much I need to put on that check to give it to them. If you want to increase it, I increase it to whatever, whatever y'all approve, but.
Your first quarter, we got a full two now.
And that's because our fiscal year falls the way it falls.
That'd be in October, December.
Right. But in our billing system, it come out in previous years.
Correct.
But again, if y'all want to make that adjustment, it costs another 20?
$39,000.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm trying to go back to the year here, it was 80 for the whole year. Do you remember what it was?
$80,000. Eighty-one. Eighty-one, eight forty.
In other words, what they're asking is bumping that $66,000 to that 81, back to that $81,000, what it was. And that would be pro-rated out soon, it'll be as part of this fiscal year.
You have the figures down, sure.
I do, but you probably haven't.
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, whatever it is.
Eight forty.
Eight forty.
Was the total yearly amount. If I compare it to $800,000, it's a real one.
The question is, do you want to bring it back to that level for the rest of this year?
So it'll be $4,000, right, a $4,000 increase for next. Budget's 61, six.
The budget's 66.
66, correct.
66, there it is, yeah.
And that was based, that 81, eight was the previous year's budget, which you take the percentage off that was sent in, you come up with 66 now.
But pretty sure it was 83, six.
Would that be for two more quarters or three?
It'd be two quarters in our fiscal years.
Two quarters.
The one we got hanging and the one we fixed to give us.
How's my guy in the window? I've got the version.
Build a new fiscal year.
Okay, you sort it out.
I'll sort that out.
Okay, we would appreciate it, because it really is odd, that's where.
It'd actually be for two quarters, it's two payments out of this.
Till I, we get our new budget set.
Correct.
We're not billing for anything extra, it's just the bare operation.
And I'll say this, we need to work on the contract.
Yes.
We both looked at the contract, and it was done many, many years ago.
2010 or something, I saw.
Yeah, and I put the only copy where you had it, and again, if y'all want to work out a different formula, whatever you want to do, but we need it in hard print, so we all know what we're doing.
And just so you're clear, every, each year, when our budget was $160,000, we kept it that for about six, six years, six hundred years, and we fundraised and paid the difference, and our costs did go up, just to save the jurisdictions. Same thing, we had it for 220, for 200, I think, for a couple of years, or 220 for a couple of years, but our costs, of course, do keep going up, just like everyone else is. And normally, we don't mind fundraising, doing that, help stuff, and that, just to ease about the citizens as much as we can, but right now, we are building a new facility next to the, next to the.
I was about to ask how that was coming, new facility and renovations.
So we're moving light, but it is underway, and it's going to be an adoption center, and that should help us with the quarantine situation as well, because.
You split it up.
The ones that have been there, we know that they're good, they've been vaccinated, they're not going to break, they're ready for adoption, and then the intake, the ones who are, the question marks, we don't know if they're going to break or not, and so that side might have to be quarantined, but this will be a separate building.
And we're at 37.2% of your intake?
I'm sorry?
We're at 37.2% of your intake? That's still cheaper than you build one more.
What's, what's the M and O budget going to be increased for the new facility?
We're not sure yet till it comes online, what that will be.
How is that going to be paid?
Right now, we're at, last year, our actual operating expenses were $239,000.
We'll take a few weeks for the microphone, with the whole.
I'm sorry, yeah, last year, I forgot about that part, last year, and what will be coming out then for y'all this next time, once we do the calculations, if we be based on $239,000, those on January fiscal years are already on that pattern. And Franklin County is set to go on it in July, and they're aware and they're fine with that, but that's our actual cost to operate, that's not anything extra. And when the new building comes online, and I'm sure costs will go up some, hopefully service will be a lot better too, we'll have more possibilities that we can, you know, serve the citizens and the jurisdictions, but we don't know yet how much that will be. Once we've, we have most of what we need to build the building, we still have to raise some more to equip it, we've got some grants in the works and so forth, but we're, we're very close. We still are doing fundraisers, and all of our extra money and efforts right now are going towards funding that building. So therefore, we haven't been able to keep our budget at the 220 for another couple of years, like we used to do several years in the past, to keep it to that level. We had to go ahead and bump it up this year to the 239 actual cost, because our funds are going towards the building. Once the building's finished, we'll still continue fundraising, we're not going to stop, and maybe we can help offset some of the new costs coming on with the new building. We can't, we don't know how much that will be, we can't guarantee how much we'll be able to help, costs may go up some, but it's still going to be a lot less than the other counties.
Since your physical's in January, ours in October, we shouldn't see an increase.
No, the, the figure that we're talking about right now is actually based on 221's intake, because we have to complete the intake to do the calculations in early January.
So we'll have to go back to the table once you complete, start your next fiscal, if you and your.
Bennett, next budget.
Well, say if the building comes online by the first of the year, hopefully it'll be before then, but then it will be a year later, probably before that will hit you.
The longer we're not on Applecare, longer the power next.
Till our next.
But here's, here's the problem, number one, they don't know what it's going to be to operate.
Right.
Number two, we're going to be under significant budget constraints. We weren't even consulted about this building, or whether or not we would be able to increase or anything. We hear about it on the radio station, when y'all had the ribbon cutting announcement or whatever. So we got a $26 million jail we got to pay for, we've got tremendous growth that has occurred in the county, we've already added two heads to solid waste, we've got requests from multiple offices, and I'm going to tell you, the revenue's not going to be there. So I don't see how Hart County's going to be able to contribute more. Just letting you know now, so you can plan.
I will cross that bridge when we get there.
But I think we all know what we're faced with this year.
Is there ever a time, is there ever a time when someone could come up there with a dog other than a animal control, and y'all will not take the dog? Is there, is there ever a time of that situation?
As long as there's citizens of Franklin and Hart County, if we have space and we're not under quarantine, we will take it.
Okay.
At no charge. But there, there are some times we're just, we're full, and we can't take anymore.
You're full, okay.
And right now, we're actually over full, you know, and then we're quarantined on top of that, so we can't move any of them out, but, yes, we will.
And then in the future, if you have this other building, and then you have a disease or whatever, any kind of disease, breakout that's contagious, you can quarantine one section and won't have to shut down?
That's.
Because I'm getting a lot of complaints about it.
Right, oh, I know.
Shut it down.
I know, we do too, and we don't like it.
No, I, I understand, but there, is there a way that after this other building is built, that you would still be able to continue with the doors open?
Our hope is.
With the parvo case or whatever?
That, that's one of the main reasons we're doing this building, is so that animals that have been, have received their vaccinations, you know, they've been there long enough that if they were going to break with parvo, they should have by then, they're ready for adoption, their stray hold is up, you know, owner hasn't claimed them, then they can move over to the adoption building, and that building should not break with parvo. I mean, there's always a possibility, but those animals should be protected at that point. And then if one comes in, the intake building, which is our only building right now, that will become our intake building, and if one breaks there, then we should be able to keep the other building open. And, you know, we'd be limited somewhat on what we can take in then, because that's not our intake building per se, but we may have to be a little bit more selective and make sure they're not going to break with something to close that building down as well. But the hope is that that building can stay open and still serve.
Okay.
And it is theoretically possible, we can have a break in both of them, it could happen, but we're trying to be careful with what's in there and, and have them be protected, so it won't happen.
Ma'am, yes, sir.
I wanted to answer your question.
If, if you could, come up here to the podium.
This is our director, Tammy Jordan-A.
Okay.
What was that last name?
Jordan-A.
Jordan-A.
Even if someone comes, we don't so much as turn them away, we would still schedule an appointment to, for when we have room, you know, weekly, most of the time when we're not under quarantine, we have animals leaving, whether it's going to rescue or adopt it or return to owners. So we would schedule an appointment for like the following week or something, so that when we would, make sure we had the space to take them in. So it's not just turn them away and not help them, you know, it's just, whether it's provide temporary food or crate to hold them in, you know, during that time, you know, just to, until we knew we had space, so to speak. And that's just because of how small of a facility we have. You know, we're serving two counties with 21 dog runs, you know, and almost, you know, 2,500 animals a year. So, you know, space, the new building will help with that, where we won't have to schedule out appointments for over a week and things like that, because we'll have more room, you know, to house, where right now, we don't.
Okay.
I just wanted to help to answer that one, just.
Can I ask a question? How many runs is that?
Twenty, 21 dog runs, 21 dog runs, yeah.
Okay.
21.
And does Franklin County have animal control?
They do not.
Okay, how, another question I have is, how do they turn in as many dogs as we do, and they don't have animal control?
From the community, most of them are brought in by the community. Now, the sheriff's department will bring in some, you know, there are certain cases that the sheriff's department or deputies or things like that will bring them in, like City of Livonia has animal control, but as far as like the county of Franklin County, they do not.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else got any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to do anything with these other two quarters?
Well, that's what I was getting at a while ago, based on our obligation at this point with the jail, I'd like to see where we're at there before we make a decision here, and if there's something we can do later on, then, you know, we can, but I, I just don't want to over-obligate.
Nope. Because we'd be making a 2024 fiscal year decision tonight, correct?
Yes, it would count for the rest of this year, but again, the number, you hadn't made a decision on next year yet, but the number should remain the same for the coming year.
But we owe them for stuff that they've done this year.
That, that depends, now, the use, we pay them according to the budget that was set in September last year. Now, is it less than what they need? I'm not arguing that point, but we paid them what we budgeted to pay them.
Y'all just asked them for a budget increase, is what you're asking.
They're asking for a budget increase for the rest of this year.
For two quarters, yeah.
And that would be, how much is a quarter?
$3,900, I think she said.
So you're talking about $7,000, $8,000 for the rest of the year.
Close to $8,000.
For the rest of the year?
To be honest, we.
About $12,000, because you got three more quarters, you only paid one.
To be honest, we denied.
Be three times instead of two times.
We denied other requests.
$12,000.
Here. We denied the jail food process request we asked.
That was based on contract.
I'm confused, are you, are you seeking approval for two checks, or are you seeking approval for three checks? Because we still got.
We got two or three quarters left. Two?
But we still owe for quarter two.
Well, seven, seven, we can work September into next fiscal year.
That's two, yeah.
So that would be two, this particular budget year.
Approximately $7,800, is what you're looking for.
Huge difference size. That mountain, a huge difference size.
I'm thankful for y'all, I'll be honest with you, I really am, I'm thankful for y'all.
Thank you, thank you.
Because that's, that's the limit, 78?
Y'all can, y'all can put a dollar figure on anything you want to approve.
Is that, is that what you're, you're bringing a motion to that?
Oh, I didn't like a motion.
We need to wait till what, we've got too many variables in play right now.
You got to have some, put these animals too.
But the thing is, you could, you could essentially approve, what, two checks, and then not approve the.
Well, new, others come in the budget.
We're coming in the budget.
Others come in the new budget, because you're going to approve or disapprove anyway.
That's what I'm saying, if we, if we approved the difference per se, what is owed, or what they're seeking tonight, we could come up in September and deny, and then go back.
Correct, that's a whole different, that's a whole different budget.
And we wouldn't owe for quarter four this year.
It's more essential rate for this year's budget, so you can't go back and get more money, so you got to use.
That's the, I mean, and I'm a little new to this, especially if you have budget, we're going outside.
We could move that continuously over, I mean, there's enough in contingency to handle them out, but that's up to y'all what you want to do.
I'm going to make a motion, we wait until we see what's going on, we got too many variables in play right now.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to, and that's not saying we will not do anything, it's just, we've got a lot of fiscal responsibility coming up that, that normally we don't have. But Commissioner Dorsey made a motion to wait and see where we're at on finances and our new budget. Do I have a second? Okay, the motion does, like a second.
I mean, I, I'm just coming at this new, you know, I mean, even though I've been here, it feels like 10 years, I've only been here for a few months. All right, I got a lot of gray hair from this, guys, but I, I don't want to deny them, but at the same time, I don't want to put this in a budget constraint, so you, you're going to have to give me, I guess, from an administrator's standpoint, I mean, you know, what?
I can tell you from the administrator's standpoint, there, we have a contingency fund, and there's enough money in contingency to cover this for the rest of the year, if y'all desire to do that.
So 7,800 for two quarters.
That, that's up to y'all.
You've got three months before you're in next year's budget.
Right.
Where we're getting 70 for three quarters?
Two quarters.
That's not right. You ordered the charge.
Ma'am, if you would, come up.
We're, we're looking at the difference between what we paid and what we was paying, that's where that money's coming from.
What she was pointing out, what she was pointing out, and she's correct, the January one was 3960 short, and then the April one and the July one, so it's actually three.
You keep saying it was short, it wasn't short, it was paid out. You keep saying it was short, it wasn't short, it was paid out.
Well, I mean, it was short from what we invoiced, right, it's different from what we invoiced, I'm sorry, you're, you're right, I misspoke on that, but-
Now, again, if you want to back up to that one, that's a different matter than what we've been talking about.
Right, but that's what she was pointing out.
That's what I'm trying to point out, is what you owe for the remainder of your fiscal year, which is not 70.
Well, that's all, that's all.
Okay, what we will be billing you with what you did, paid us short, which was a 3960, we've already billed you another 24.
Right, and I'm holding until we find out when you're going to increase.
So we'll bill you one more time at 20,460. So those together would be 48,480, not the 78,000 that you're, you're discussing.
If you're saying we owe you 48,000, you just have to settle it for it, it's not my idea.
Dust County would, has already approved the difference, is what they were talking about.
We're talking about the difference of what we paid you and what we don't pay. See, because the whole deal, you ain't having $20,000 for the whole year difference, for the whole year, from 66,000 to the 83, 84, whatever that was. That's all you got for the whole year difference. We're talking about two quarters of that, and the difference is the fact.
I think the confusion is two quarters to come, the one you're holding and the July one.
Right.
Okay, but January was 3960 short compared to what we billed, so that's the third one, that's where the third one's coming in.
It's just been brought to our attention, though, and here we are near the July.
Right.
And here's, here's the other thing, we got a 1.1 million dollar payment coming up for the jail.
We got the first responder needs to with fire maintenance or something.
That's the whole point, I mean, it's, there's too many variables in play right now to make a commitment tonight on this experience.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I don't know all those numbers, but the question was stated, if it's warranted. And I would love for you gentlemen to come over and visit the shelter that we are living with now, compared to what Anderson has. People are leaving here and going over to this beautiful shelter and adopting animals for free, but if you come and see our shelter, our shelter, that we're grateful to have, I think maybe then you would feel more that it is warranted.
You're speaking of up the street, you're speaking of right up the street?
Pause, Anderson County Pause, yeah, have you drove by there? Brand new, beautiful shelter, come see what we're living with. And I don't work there, but-
I've been in there.
Our, our shelter, it is, the funding is warranted, the community doesn't want it to be an animal control facility, that animals are put down in seven days. If my dog gets lost, I want time to find it, I want to be able to go get it back. And if I'm working there, I want time to find a rescue to take it. And the Hart County Humane Society is, is working hard with spay and neuter to try to prevent animals, but I just wanted to say it is warranted, and please, anytime you want to come, I'd love to go with you. I'll buy a pizza.
Well, let me ask this question. I was in there yesterday morning, early. Does anybody attend the shelter during, over the weekend?
Attend what shelter?
The pause. I was in there yesterday morning.
Yesterday was Monday?
Monday, yes, ma'am.
They might be closed Sunday and Monday, I don't know. They're closed Wednesday.
I don't know what they're on.
But, you know, they don't take in animals either, they turn people away, that's a big shelf, that's a beautiful shelter.
They have a three-month waiting list.
I just wondered if anybody's in there over the weekend, because it smelled terrible.
They're there Saturdays, I know for sure, but their director is a veterinarian who, she does spay and neuter, and they're giving animals away for free. We, you know, our county can't afford that, you know, we're trying to, we're grateful for our vet, where's the camera? We're grateful for our veterinarians who are doing rescue rates.
Oh, I am too, I am too.
Of cats and dogs, but yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to have a total figure of what, what money we're talking, how much money were we talking about?
Well, you said we could allocate so many dollars and it'd be a set fee until the next-
Y'all can allocate anything. You have fulfilled your budgeted obligation so far, is what Terrell's telling me. They're wanting an increase based off of the numbers that were talked about in the intake before. There's a gap between that of 66,000 to 80, 82,000, it's about $16,000. That's, that's the difference.
That's for the whole four quarters, correct?
That's for the last quarter.
And we said that, that budget was set, and a millage rate was set with that budget to bring in money so we didn't have to tap into our fund balance, because we knew that this jail was hanging over our head and we were trying to do what we could do there. We've also sensed, and this is some of the things you have, you've got to be cognizant of, where you're going to be raising the millage rate. You've added people in solid waste, we've did wage increases at the sheriff's department and also EMS. Turnovers and all that, we've had turnover problems we've had. All these expenses are going to continue to build, and you've got to keep these in the back of your mind, because when this budget cycle comes through, you're going to have to set a millage rate with these expenses that are built in, that we've already added to the budget. And the only way you're going to be able to get it is through property taxes.
Well, I think where we're going with-
You need to think about it, you need to understand it.
I think where we were going was they just take payment for the finished fiscal year.
That's why I said, let's just wait, you've got three months in your next year's budget. You know, you have a hot, whole, clear picture, you know what your digest is going to be, you're going to know what organic growth you've got, what new money you've got, that picture becomes clear. But until then, you don't know, that's the problem that we have.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Danny Henry, and I, I'm just trying to get-
If you would, come up here to the-
Got to go one way.
We need two exits, at least.
Are we talking, I'm still trying to get clear, are we talking about the $7,000?
7,800.
Okay, enough.
We're talking about 16,000.
Enough, let's just stop this, we wasted too much time on it. I have a partner, we will commit to raise that for you, and we're done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to contribute?
I mean, we're- I'm getting old, I'm not ready to retire.
And I, we do have to respect where we're at in our budget, I mean, like I said, 1.1 million dollars, you know, that we've got for this jail, and, and if there is something there that we can do after our digest has come in, then, you know, let's look at it then.
We're gonna, we're gonna have some data in the month.
Right.
We're gonna know what we're looking at.
Well, I think I want to, it's a lot. My hope would be that after this money is raised, and after you look at your data, if you've got 7,000 extra dollars that you can contribute to the shelter, then you will do that.
If we got, if 7,000 dollars is all this, then, yeah, we can do that, I'm, I'm confident in that.
That's, that's be easy, about what we're saying we can do. If we do that, we'd have to put in enough budget. Don't pay us back money to anybody.
Well, exactly. But what I'm saying is, if there is extra, I'm going to ask that you would consider adding it to their budget next year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's also the part next, there's also the part next year of the new building that's going to have to be, that there's going to be incremental cost, and it's probably going to be expensive.
All right. We know, I mean, I know that we, we don't have our own animal shelter or whatever to keep our, keep dogs in or cats in, but, you know, the only choice that we got is either that, with that animal shelter, or build one. And I believe what they got is cheaper to do what we doing than to build one. But I may be wrong.
I agree with you, Mr. Teasley.
All right. We'll move on to-
Vida partners.
A Vida, community partners, and basically this is-
This is just renewal of the same contract we have every year with them for transport of their Vida patients by the transit service. Same terms, same rates, just the 2024 contract.
I make a motion to extend the 24 Vida community partners contract for another year.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Bennett. Second by Mr. Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five vote. Then we'll move on to, we're going to skip all the deannexation, go to the Board of Education Tax Levy Resolution.
You going to skip them or go through them?
Yeah, they're all available right now, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I just figured we'd do this resolution down there on AL.
That's up to you, don't you?
Yeah, I mean, we-
Yeah, let's wait till AL, go to them.
Do it, I mean, that will keep it all in order.
You're right. So we're on G now, 13G?
Right, yeah. Board of Education Tax Levy.
I just have a question, is this something, this normal procedure that we have to do?
First time I've ever known us to have to do it, but it's a different situation.
Okay.
Kim, you want to explain?
I, I called the Board of Education's lawyer and asked that question, because you had that question, I mean, he said we've done it four times, four. But this is the backdrop if, if the economy tanked and the East Slos couldn't make the payment.
With that, making the property taxes.
This is what they have to do to ensure that it comes out of property taxes. And so we really don't have a choice, I mean, this is constitutionally required for their project.
What's the bonds all about? I read through all the-
That was part of the referendum, that basically they're advancing money.
They would have borrowed in advance to build and then paid back with the Slos.
I assumed that, I just wanted to hear somebody say it.
I think it was like 5.5 million in bonds or something.
Is theirs based on like their stability financially, just like ours was, with the jail? What was our rate that we got from our bond?
Double eight.
What was their rate?
Double eight, something like that.
About 3%.
So ours was about 3%?
Interest rate.
Yeah, interest rate.
But the interest rate, I guess, does it follow interest rates?
3.2.
I believe I heard that earlier on.
Yeah, it's been a while.
All right, can we get a motion from Chairman to sign this resolution?
I make a motion from Chairman to sign the resolution.
I just want to point out something. So you got a $7 million maximum principal over a four-year period. Y'all look at how much interest is going to be paid on this.
1.8 million. 1.67 million.
23% over the course, total. And they're, and they're getting over $400,000 a month.
Is it, was it bonds for a specific, specific project? Is that what the bonds are sold for?
There's some projects in there, but, I mean, we don't have a choice but to approve it, because the voters approved it, so we have to.
That was my question.
My point here is, this is why this board has never done any kind of bonds or anything for Slos, because, you see, you're eating up all this interest.
Their service debt's unreal.
Okay.
You see, you got, you got a motion.
I made a-
Yes, I made a motion.
Commissioner Bennett made a motion, we'll have a second.
I make a second based on the voters voted on this, and I'm honoring their vote for yes.
All right, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five vote. All right, then we'll move on to Credit for Experience Raid Department.
And you'll see the email I put in there from Shannon, he's hired somebody and wanting to give them two years, I believe it was.
Six years.
Six years, okay.
Yes.
I have to get that. I'll make a motion, we give the credit for six years, experience is requested.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown, any discussion?
Yep.
This is pretty well routine, for those that don't know, we hire somebody with experience, we catch them up to date with our paid rate so that they'll-
Especially if you can get somebody.
Yeah. Motion to second, all in favor. It's five vote. All right, we'll move on to Majestic Shores Lane Road Abandonment.
I make a motion to-
Kim, did you have anything?
Sorry. I have to advertise it.
I just pulled that up, that all does have a common property owner around it, and-
No address changes or nothing else?
No, nothing built on it.
That's really going to be for the purpose of paving that road, it is a county road, it is not paved, it is in Majestic Shores, and they would like to pave it, and so-
Their expense.
Yes, and I talked to Mr. Schmidt a little bit, and y'all may want to clarify that, if it's going to come back into the county road system, it has specifications, it has 60-foot roadway, it has to be built with DOT standards, those type of things, right? Who can I direct him to talk to about what it would take to break it back?
Me, and the problem we're going to have, is everybody down there don't have a 30-foot roadway.
It can't come back into, it won't be able to come back into the system.
Well, then it won't come back.
No.
Well, I mean, if he owns all the property around it, he can put a 60 with it.
Yeah, if he, if he wanted to, yes.
It comes with income plot.
Yeah, the, the other option there is going to be for, you know, a maintenance agreement between all of those lots with that roadway and it not coming back into county, but those were the, the two things we were looking at, that he's the adjacent property, oh, the LLC is the adjacent property.
He could give it, he deals with half a acre lot, so I'm not making a big deal there.
I'll make a motion to grant the request.
Well, you got to start the process, and you got to advertise it.
Start the process, that's all we're looking for tonight.
Okay, so, motion.
Before we start, does he really understand what this is going to do?
We're going to start the process, we talked, if he chooses to pull it back off the table before I get finished, he can do that.
But my point is, why do we want to waste the money yet, so we understand? I'd rather you confer with him first and let the motion be contingent upon that, because if he's going to change his mind, there's no sense in going through with this, because we got to run legal ads in the newspaper and everything else.
And I've had multiple conversations with them, so they should be well aware of the consequences.
But if his plans were to pave it and do all this-
His plan was to pave. David mentioned about bringing it back into the county.
I just, I just want to make sure everything's clear, and he's got a clear understanding, because what's that's abandoned, we can't take it back in.
Exactly, it is gone.
Yeah, because it's not-
If it's done correctly.
Yes.
I don't think they have, I don't think they have any intention of taking it back in.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett. Start the process.
The questions were from the board, were y'all clear on what you wanted to do before we started the process?
We wanted to get a liability, but the county didn't have money to pave it, so we're trying to figure out what we can do with this road that the county has.
Okay, so while y'all are not in either, it is a 30-foot width roadway, it would need to be a 60, and it doesn't have that lot.
If we ever took it back.
So the chance of it coming back in, even if you pave it, the DOT's backs, get your roadway and compromise on the size of the road lot.
So can we gravel it? It's yours. Right now it's a dirt road, we need three lots.
You're asking for permission for you to put gravel on it?
Yes.
On a county road?
Yes. And we're looking, right now we got a dirt road going through the middle faster, we've got lots all the way around it, and, and that are approved, and they're being-
If it's a county road, we can-
We should be the ones doing that.
We can put gravel on it, if it's a county road.
Yeah, we can put gravel.
Y'all can gravel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we'll gravel, why we'll gravel all the rest of our road, then we'll be, it'll be just regular gravel road, and we won't put fancy heat gravel and all that stuff, only just standard gravel.
Standard gravel.
Does it need paving? Is that current on the, James?
I believe it's be in evidence, actually, in good condition, and if you put gravel on it, that would absolutely save everybody.
You're right, you're paying taxes and you should be, and if it is, you know, we will maintain that road as it be in a county road.
Did you ask anybody to put gravel?
We didn't ask anybody to do anything, because we didn't, I was told the county didn't do anything.
No, you were told the county was not going to pave it.
We'll pave it.
I told you that, I'll be exactly what I said.
That's right, that's right. It depends in which those roads were done by the county, and absolutely the county doesn't need to be asphalted, you know, it doesn't need to be-
Okay, now the question is, do y'all want to withdraw your request for abandonment?
Let us gravel it and then you can see for sure.
Okay, okay.
So you'll get somebody to check that tomorrow?
No, I ain't promising tomorrow, I'll get them to check in the next few days.
Somebody call Shannon, tell them to give it a second.
We just need to work it in and be done. No, you can't, you can't do anything on a county road. You see the water?
They'll do a good job, though. They'll take whatever they need.
No, you can't, you can't do that for the liability party, that's the problem.
Don't help too much, he'll try to hire you.
Yeah, you own job.
But if y'all want to pave some roads, we know some other roads that people are asking, but we appreciate y'all.
We're glad to make a deal, we guarantee you.
There you go, one project says a donation, we'll work out another one.
Okay, so we're withdrawing the no action, withdrawing the request for abandonment. Okay, duplex ordinance first reading. I know we've been in discussion about duplexes. We've had people to apply for permits for duplexes. We don't have an ordinance that concerns our duplex here in Hart County, so I've asked Kim if she would put us an ordinance together, and she's pulled from different counties, and I think she's done a good job as a first reading. I mean, we can still add and take away or whatever needs to be done to fit Hart County, but Kim, you have anything you want?
We actually dropped this into the building permit, chapter eighteen. It's not in the land development standards.
Okay.
So to the extent that it, right now, it is drafted so that it takes precedence over the land development standards, to the extent that y'all change those in any degree, or they don't meet this, this will, this is going to need some amending, once you get your land development standards done, but this would get you started. The moratorium is on everything other than single-family residences, so this would get in, two single-family residences combined with a common party wall. The definition can be expanded.
I think it needs to be multifamily. It's for two under one roof.
Everybody, almost every ordinance that I looked at treated duplexes differently than multifamily housing. They all called it two-family housing.
Under the same roof.
You can do that.
That's multi, that becomes more than one.
A coney, a single and two-family residential, a property occupied primarily by one or more single-family dwellings. Obviously, like Kim, I went through it and just looked at some definitions, let's say.
I sent y'all an email about.
A duplex is a single structure usually with a single owner featuring two residences.
I mean, it doesn't really matter as far as the moratorium's concerned, because the moratorium was specifically mentioned duplexes, it doesn't really matter.
Franklin County defines a duplex as a two-family residential. Townhouses are defined as single-family attached. Stevens County put it under multifamily. It says two or more dwelling units with varying arrangements of interests and party walls. Raven County refers to duplexes as two-family units. Green County says duplexes are a two-family dwelling as opposed to a single-family dwelling. Multifamily starts at three dwellings. I pulled that many. If y'all know waving through those ordinances is like pulling.
Yeah.
Well, can't we give it a definition as a board ourselves?
You can.
What's wrong with the definition there? What's wrong with that definition?
A duplex means two dwelling units attached by a common party wall and placed on one individual lot. I don't have a problem with.
The only problem is, if you look at your comprehensive plan, it talks about multifamily and single-family. You're going to have to classify these to bring it in, to bring it in alignment with the comprehensive plan.
Well, it may down the flow, but I'm going to make a motion to accept this duplex ordinance for first reading.
Can we not make changes?
You can.
So when we make changes, do we have to motion every change?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a couple of things, and I'm not going to get all to them this first go-around. First, I want to clear up, anything as far as like environmental impact, you know, silt fence, great, that falls under chapter forty-six, not chapter eighteen, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then as far as the structure itself, you know, I don't see in here a minimum square feet per side. You know, personally, just looking off some of the other surrounding counties, I seen, you know, at least a minimum of six hundred per side, which will be twelve hundred. Some of them go nine hundred square feet in Jackson County, but also Jackson County is, you know, they made it, I think it's like five or six acres per duplex. So either one, I kind of want to open that up for discussion. I think six hundred, I would like to see that in there, you know, twelve hundred per unit, six hundred per side, nine hundred, if that's just what everybody wants to go with, you know, I guess I am fine with that, but I think six hundred is a little, you know, still setting a minimum standard there. Another thing was parking, that would follow under chapter eighteen, correct? As far as the amount of parking, I think parking needs to be a minimum of two spots per unit, that would be a total of four per duplex. And I guess how you would define a parking spot is whatever G dot. I don't know, who has the exact specifications as far as size of a parking spot? Who defines that?
It's in the order, it's per meeting.
Most every county has it in their duplex ordinance where it's a minimum of two, some go to three, two, I think is kind of across the board. You know, Franklin County gets pretty in-depth, and I'm not totally against this on, you got minimum roof pitch of two twelve, they got minimum heated square living floor area of fifteen hundred square foot, they even go into requiring, you know, certain roof materials, certain external side materials. That's up to you guys, I mean, you know, I would like for it to be, you know, architectural shingles are better, but, you know, also they don't want to.
Two twelves a metal roof.
Two twelves, and that would fall under just regular building standards anyways, I guess is what I'm getting at.
There's a couple of things I'd like to add to it, too. I was just making a motion for the first reading, and I'm sure everybody will add something to the next one.
You need to have all this in there for your next reading, if you're going to take this as a first. And I really think this needs to be more developed before we take it as a first. One thing that we need to really look at is stormwater runoff. If you've got a lot of concrete, asphalt.
It says one per lot in here, sixty-five thousand square feet, about acre and a half.
I understand, where's that water going to go?
Sure.
Where's that going to go? Where's it going to go? Obviously, during the construction phase, if it's more than an acre.
Building code, they got to stick it around the property.
They got to have silt fence, and I get that, but I'm just saying, if somebody's building fifteen or twenty on ten acres, they're probably going to have a retention pond.
You can't have but one acre and an acre and a half, so.
We haven't defined that far yet.
Yeah.
We need to go for a part of.
Well, that's what the ordinance in here that gets created says.
Are we going to allow these to be on slabs or subfloors? I mean, if some are built both ways, most of them are on slabs. Firewall, what kind of insurance rating?
That goes back to the codes, that'd be a two-hour wall.
Codes are one hour.
You can also have sprinkler systems, you can fire those, too.
Well, it's a two-hour wall.
But as far as the building itself, the code.
And that's fine, let's just put it in here.
It has to be built in code.
That's clear for everybody, or at least reference it.
They're going to give a permit unless they're playing and stuff, these codes.
Yeah, all that stuff, there's.
And all the people who get a permit is a licensed contractor. I mean, can build, can build these?
Unless you put it in ordinance.
It should be under chapter eighteen, I mean, this is underneath the building.
You need to bill one.
Non-contractor cannot build anything for rent. Build in my house to live in for two years, he cannot build anything to rent.
Yeah, everything's under the building codes in here. The only thing that I've heard mentioned, which I would have thrown in next meeting, would have been the square footage of it, which around Hartville area, we have basically twelve, thirteen hundred square feet ones, I don't think there's any eighteen hundred square feet ones. So, you know, if we want to put square footage in there later, everything else is building code.
And you can go above building code if you want, on anything else, so.
Well, you'd have to do that on all houses if you're done.
Anything leaves out.
Yeah, you meet.
There's another problem that we have that's going to come into conflict here, tell you, and I talked about this, this is where you've got multiple residences on the same map and parcel and one being rented.
Again, that needs to be part of the whole.
I agree, but I just want to make sure everybody understands, this is going to create, this is going to trigger some other issues we're going to have to deal with.
We're going to have to deal with other issues anyway. Again, that needs to be defined in one residence, whether it's a single residence or a duplex involved, it could be a parcel, it don't matter what parcel, it's a hundred acres.
What about shared septic tanks?
I'm sorry?
Shared septic tanks, would that fall under?
No, they. Personally, I don't think you should do that.
The health department.
Why can't we just?
But I'm saying, as far as this goes, do we need to define septic tanks in this?
Health department is one of them.
Health department won't allow that.
If they get a permit for.
The health department won't allow one tank on two units. It's going to have to have two tanks.
One drinking.
Yes.
But they won't allow one tank.
But if.
Yeah.
If they're good with it, what would be the problem with it?
I checked on most of this stuff.
Are y'all good with twelve hundred per, I mean, twelve hundred square, and then six hundred per unit?
I think it's going to be seven.
That's tight.
That's like a nine hundred.
Seven hundred.
What'd you say?
Seven, seven fifty.
Six hundred for it was tight.
That's tight for two.
Let's put seven hundred in it.
We got two that I know of in the county, let's see what they are and kind of take an average of the two, one's bigger than the other.
I think it's about a half dozen around, there's one up on Mount Oak Road, there's one back the woods up there, somebody built one up there, someone was told.
Old Henry, there's one on.
There's one on Henry, one on the airline go mine.
Well, we can check, city's got them all over it, we can check theirs.
I think this, I think this. Michael, what's the ones on Bicker Street here? Do you know? The white ones here on Bicker Street, what size they are?
I think they're seventy.
And the blue ones, seven fifty.
I think.
But they're mainly for, the market there was for a lot of these construction workers coming in, staying, it wasn't a family.
Yeah, if you're in a stuff construction people's.
I'd say, if they're seven fifty, you wouldn't want to go no less than seven fifty.
Seven fifty is about what you want.
Personally, living in it.
Because they're big, they're big, I've walked them, and they're good size, but I mean, you wouldn't want to go any smaller.
Well, you take a twelve by, you know what a model, twelve by seventy, how many square feet you got there? Eight forty? So, you know, you put a family in it.
Or you go fifteen hundred.
I thought you said nine hundred.
Are y'all going to?
We've said seven fifty.
Are y'all going to put a minimum on single-family residences, too?
No.
A single-family, you've been referred, you've got, I'll show you what it's definitely. If you have single-family residence, you've got a tiny house, it's two different, two different places. Tiny house, you're going to go with a five on the fourth.
It's four fifty or something, tiny house then.
Five on the fourth.
So they could build a single-family at six hundred square feet, but you can't build a duplex at six hundred square feet.
Yeah, I am, too.
Let's go with that.
That's what Franklin County has in there, is fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Our comprehensive plan says that these should be adjacent to the city limit parameter. I think we need to define that, too, where you're going to put them.
Well, another thing, too.
If you don't.
It might spark some more annexations, too.
I understand, but I mean, they don't need to contradict, they need to be aligned.
Could you do, could you do a smaller, I guess, lot size if it gets?
My thing is, if they're not going to be on, if they're not going to be on the city store, why should you contain them to certain areas? Because you should be able to build most anywhere in county, I would think, if you're not going to be on city store.
Well, another thing, too, I mean, if this is maybe a starter home for a young couple that's working at the industrial park up there, and there's somebody that puts some up in Show Creek area, that would probably be a benefit, I mean.
All I'm saying is, the comprehensive plan was developed by the citizens of this county, and this is where their representatives, so I'm just wanting everybody to be aware of what we're doing, that we need to keep in mind our comprehensive plan and make sure that these all kind of interlock together, or else we're going to need to change it.
I'm well aware of the comprehensive plan, how it reads. I just think the duplex is a different animal, like Commissioner Sayer said, it's a starter home, it should just be out there, I don't think it should be, I think it should be affordable, and when you get up near the city, you're not getting affordable anymore. I don't think there should be any bells and whistles added to the ordinance whatsoever, because when you start doing that, it's not affordable anymore, and what we've been looking for here is affordable housing for the past couple of years. So I was speaking with the fire chief slash inspector city, they love duplexes in the city, they work out for them real well, so I think we should get on that train as well.
I totally disagree. I understand there's some, but you look at what people have come to these meetings and talked about, they like the rural agricultural heritage, and they don't, they want larger lot sizes. You've heard people come here, that's why we did what we did on the county road subdivision, people don't want these small lot sizes. The health department, or the board of health is proposing, you know, lot size increases. So, I mean, I just think, and there's language in here already about the character and design compatible with the existing neighborhoods, so duplexes are not going to fit out in the county in a rural setting and be able to meet the languages in this ordinance.
Well, I don't think, I think with an acre and a half, you're not going to get developers jumping all over this, I don't think we'll be pepper sprayed with duplexes from developers and builders, because acre and a half is a lot of land for a duplex, because a duplex is affordable housing, I mean, it's not something they can sell for three fifty, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. It's investment income, we all know it's investment income, so.
Quick question, Kim, on the setbacks, why is it less on Rink Creek Highway than Smith McGee, Cokesbury, and it's a hundred feet on?
Speed limit three.
I picked up the same thing that we've been working on.
There's two things, one is a speed limit, the other two is fifty-one from Hartwell to Bowersville will probably be four-laned, just like highway seventeen is, and there's a lot of people losing their homes, so that's why the setback is increased on twenty-nine North and South, Bowersville Highway, on fifty-one from Hartwell to Bowersville.
Twenty there.
And twenty, I said twenty-nine, there was another one that we did, but Rink Creek Highway, Cokesbury Highway, seventy-seven was the other one.
Rink Creek Highway keeps going, it's going to need to be four-lane before Bowersville Highway.
God bless.
And they said, and I know that you hear rumors, but somebody said they're going to finally build that bridge over there in Carolina to come in the backside.
City needs four lanes, city needs four lanes, Johnson's.
We're going to need six lanes. So what I'm getting at is, should we just make it a hundred feet? Should we make it a hundred feet on these roads to meet the same as these other, you know? Instead of having sixty up here and a hundred down here, I mean.
We're just trying to keep people from, so if a car leaves a roadway, you go up to Mount Hebron Road right now, and it's fifty-five, somebody leaves a roadway, you had a forty-foot setback, that car is going to hit that house.
Right.
That was part of the reason, the other reason was looking at it from a future standpoint, a future growth and roads being widened where somebody wouldn't lose their home.
That's what I was saying, though, but we, it's sixty in here for Rink Creek Highway, you just missed Rink Creek Highway, but then it's a hundred, why not just make it a hundred up here?
On interior subdivision areas.
No, on Smith McGee, Cokesbury, Rink Creek, I mean, should we go ahead and plan ahead and make it a hundred as well on these roads, or are you guys saying, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, should we keep it at sixty, or should we just have one hundred on both?
We were looking at it from the standpoint, we didn't feel like Rink Creek Highway would ever be widened to a four-lane. Could it be a three-lane? Possibly, but not a four-lane.
I wish they would.
Twenty-nine, there's already three lanes in some places, and it will be four. Seventy-seven, if Interstate three ever materializes, that will be a four-lane highway.
Yeah, Rink Creek Highway will never be widened.
I just wanted to clarify.
So what we got so far is fifteen hundred square foot.
That's pretty much it, yeah.
And what else do you have there?
The environmental stuff.
Kim, did you get what he asked for a while ago? And everybody was, was any objection to that?
The driveway, we all good with that, minimum of two, two per side.
He makes roof pitch and shingles and things like that, I don't know that.
Well, that's what I started getting pitched, but then Michael said most of that stuff will fall under building code.
It does, it falls under.
But the parking lots need to be put in, I mean, the parking spots, they need to be put in.
That way you'll take into consideration and do a permit for the whole job, all that be laid out.
And we're going to specify the parking areas, will it be concrete or asphalt, what kind of base?
Yes, it needs to be concrete, it needs to be concrete or asphalt. I did read that in several ordinances, so that way we can cut out gravel, there's concrete asphalt, I mean, guys, once again, jump in, you got any objections?
Do you start doing a hundred-foot setbacks in concrete driveways, this, we're getting out of affordable again. I mean, you're looking at fifteen-yard concrete, concrete two-hundred-something-dollar yard cost, without a dollar put in driveway. So I would think you stick with your gravel driveways. So I would think you stick with your gravel driveways.
And if we don't, if we don't require concrete and asphalt driveways on single-family, is that gonna hurt us not not having it there and having it here?
That's not.
If we start, if we start making people have concrete driveways in the county, we're all gonna be.
In a subdivision, we're gonna apply.
Oh, yeah.
But not on somebody building a.
But if somebody builds one, I I don't think so, but if there's more than one, I think you're gonna have to do something like that.
Well, on acre and a half, I mean, that's a pretty good spot of land, set fifteen hundred square feet house. I mean, fifteen hundred square feet is not even there at all anymore.
If you got fifteen acres.
I mean, they could build bigger.
If you got fifteen acres to split up, an acre and a half, and you've got all these and you're gonna basically put you together a little development of duplexes, then you're gonna need to do all that.
But they're gonna have to, that'd be called on the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, that would go back to subdivision.
But it's gonna be duplexes. Once we find that in there, I'm good with it.
Two or more is a subdivision.
Two or more is a subdivision.
Subdivision, so they go back to the subdivision.
Technically over two.
If they want to buy a spot of land and build a tenant, they're gonna go fall in all of it.
But it's still.
You go back to chapter forty-six.
That detail's not to be there.
Can we put that in there, Kim?
I think we have it, but the thing, not in conflict with chapter forty-six.
Yeah, got you.
Stands.
Got you, okay.
So I pulled out what I felt like was in conflict and added it until y'all get chapter forty-six fixed and then this may need to be revised at that point.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Bennett, you wanna amend your motion to take this as first amendment with these amendments and then she can come back the next meeting with these amendments?
You still have the first reading?
No, you have the second.
Make the second reading.
Walter has always told us the second reading, it should be basically the final draft. So you're going, so you know what you're setting yourselves up for.
I'm in my motion to add all of these amendments to the first reading. It's been discussed.
All right. Commissioner Bennett makes a motion to take this as the first reading with additional amendments. You got a second?
Uh, I just wanna make sure they've covered everything. Green space has something else I had highlighted in here, but once again, that's gonna go back to, are you gonna be defended? It'd be forty-six. Okay, all right. Uh, da-da-da-da-da. I mean, the two main points we hit on from your square footage, parking, and then Kim has answered everything else for me, which falls under forty-six. Um, I'll give a second to Commissioner Bennett's motion.
Okay.
With amendments.
With amendments.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Uh, any discussion? We'll call for a vote, all in favor? All right, it's five of them. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Now we'll go on to the the final budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-two, and that's just where they move money from one fund to another.
Yeah, basically, uh, you'll, we we changed the accounting line items this year, uh, during the center, middle of this particular budget year twenty-two. And what you're seeing here is a lot of money being moved back and forth. Several department numbers actually changed, so you'll see a whole department budget moving from one number to the other one.
Why are you smiling, is all that legal?
This comes straight from the CPAs, I didn't touch any of it.
Yeah, I read that part, too.
But again, I mean, but but the bottom line, I guess if there's a a good point to it, we we still come out in the green, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-two, uh, even after making about a seven hundred thousand dollar payment on the first part of the jail construction.
That's awesome.
Which we still come out with about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for plus revenue versus expenses for the twenty-two year. And and what you're seeing there is a lot of moving back and forth, a lot of it, yes, with the premium pay where it kicked in, having to move money back in out of the the COVID money, moving it back or off to the general fund to cover cover payroll and stuff like that.
Just just for point of clarification, I don't want people to think that we sitting here made a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
No, 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 no.
That that we actually have gone in the hole with the increases and raises and salaries that we've done with EMS.
That's, we're talking about twenty-two budget.
I understand, I understand.
Twenty-three's a different animal.
Coming into this year, this is all, this this not gonna exist.
No, 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 that's, this was the first of last year.
I understand, I just want to make sure.
Right.
I want somebody thinking we got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
No, 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 no.
We're denying motion.
Okay. Can we get a motion for, allow me to sign this?
Second.
Resolution for final budget amendment. We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five of the vote. Uh, now we come to the resolution, Ms. Kim, as far as the de-annexation, and the county will take a vote on that right now. Can we get a motion for the county to de-annex from the town of Bowersville as far as where the old fire department was set?
It says the list and.
Point two-eight and point one-eight acre.
Yeah, a little bit higher acre, just for the building, setting that fire department. We didn't realize it didn't see it till the day.
So moved.
Got a motion, motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion?
Just so everybody knows, there is a reverter clause in that fire department, the property owner.
Correct.
Mr. Roberts has been.
I've been talking to Mr. Roberts this morning.
And he requested this.
Yeah.
He requested that we do this, is basically what.
Technically, what the landlord's requesting.
Yeah, and he had already de-annexed his other land anyway, so.
If we didn't de-annex, we would have been an island and we would have messed everybody else up, Cooks down to uh, Biro. And so we knew it was going back to him, he'd already requested de-annex the other, so we were, had we not de-annexed, we would have been given him back a piece of property that was still annexed. So it works out for everyone.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five of the vote. Now we, uh, as far as the resolution, Kim, are we good there now?
We are good, and I actually did that on all parcels. And I'll have to bring you an exhibit A back. I struggled a little bit with Wesley Roberts. I don't.
Ms. Bryant wasn't the problem?
She she was on one end, this is a different end of town.
This don't know that. This is uh, this is the property right here, this is a county.
Yeah, but there's a parcel in between.
It's a smaller one.
A little sliver.
A little sliver, but this is county.
That's county across room, correct?
This is not, but that is.
Yeah, okay.
We can jump across here, and this place will still be city.
Correct, definitely.
Touching the city.
Actually, that little, that little house right there is city, too.
Okay. So I think it it didn't work the way Terrell and I talked about it would work, jumping across the street. So I haven't exhibited any resolution, I need to add him back in, cause I had pulled him out, um, and and I, yeah, I added us in as parcel number nine. So I I put him back in and bring that exhibit back and give that to Ms. Lwana, but I have a resolution ready. We can take care of all of them.
Okay. We'll get a motion for, allow me to sign the resolution that de-annexes these properties.
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman sign the resolution for de-annexation of property belonging to Joshua Barnett, parcel number C seventeen A O eighty-one, Brad Cooks, seven, C seventeen O forty-two O O one, and Betty Cook, C seventeen O forty-two, uh, Wesley Roberts, C O three dash zero one three, James Holcomb, seventeen, C seventeen A O eighty-three, David Melissa Holloway, parcel C seventeen A O eighty-two, and C seventeen A O eighty-three O O one, and Carol Bryant, C seventeen A O forty-three, and then the two county, county stuff.
Okay. You got a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five of the vote. Okay. That's all I've got on the agenda except for public comment, and do we have anyone here for public comment, as long as it's not a uh personal comment, but if it's got anything to do with the county or what, we're welcome to hear you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, spoke to us.
I've got a question. Back to that dog issue, I know we spent loads of time on that stuff tonight, but the question is, would it be feasible at all, since it would benefit generally everybody, to have part of a fee reduction if you had or pet neutered? Just a question.
They do that.
Can we do two dollars, let's say, versus five or ten? The penalty for not neutering and overloading us with unneeded animals?
They have clinics where they offer it at twenty dollars for neutering and spaying and so forth. They do have fee reductions, like I said, they have small clinics.